Hi Herb.
Hey.
Why can't, do you see me?
No.
Huh?
No.
Okay, let me try this. Okay, there I am.
There you go.
Get out of my hair. I should put my cap on.
I put mine on only because of this, you know, when the shit, when the shine comes off the top.
This, I was, six months after nine eleven, I was in Rome.
Yeah.
When I wore this and they, they thought I was a terrorist.
Oh, my God. At least, at least you were French and you know, or you're from the Basque country, which would, you know.
Yeah. Hey Herb, thanks for doing this. I'm doing it the last year. You've been great.
Yeah.
It's just really appreciated.
It's been fun.
Are you in your home office now or a home?
I'm at home. I, I picked a spot where I may have better, I mean, I was buff, buffering a little bit last time, so.
Yeah, okay. You're coming in pretty clear.
Good, great. Did you get your bike?
No, 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 I'm not gonna buy it until I'm in Vermont because, yeah, because I gotta, I'm moving, you know.
I know. Yeah.
So it's like, there's something else to move and, but right on the street, they have this, they have a bike shop that sells them, so that's.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, it, it, I'm, I'm sure, where is it Burlington?
Yeah, yeah, um, they have a shop in South Burlington.
Oh, yeah.
Now I'll be living in Shelburne, which abuts South Burlington.
Yeah, cool.
Burlington, South Burlington, Shelburne.
Yeah, you'll be fine. You'll be fine.
There's some great bike paths there. I just wanna, you know, I wanna make sure I can get from my subdivision to the, to the downtown Shelburne, which leads very easily to the, um, to the bike path without going on a road that supposedly my subdivision, which is a brand new subdivision.
I gotta let some people in here.
All right, all right, sorry. Oh, Jeff is here. We got Quorum as soon as Jeff gets on. Michael Vinsky's here, Don is here. Hi Jeff, you hear us?
I can.
Excellent. We have Quorum. Let's get Michael here. And I see Donna and Andrew, right?
Yeah, hi.
Coming from Amherst, that's where you are now?
Yeah, we're in Amherst.
All these books behind you must, must be professors or something. And Michael, you are, Michael is coming. That's good. Okay, um. Whoa, let me lower this here. Now I see it's nine oh one. I like to call a meeting to order. Is that okay? Meeting is called to order.
Seven oh one.
Seven oh one.
Seven oh one and, uh, the open meet, my standard open meeting announcements that the governor's COVID nineteen mandates has amended are no longer in effect, but that this meeting is being recorded. Now, I, I, I believe that, I know I received the draft June nine minutes and I believe Herb sent them to you yourself as well, Jeff, and.
No, Jeff did not get them because I thought you would be sending them out to Jeff after you looked at it.
Oh, okay. All right.
We've done it before.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I usually have to carry do it, but, um, okay, let me see if I can do that. Now it's, they're very brief, Jeff. You know what we can do, why don't we do this?
Let me, let, let me just bring it up. Do you want me to bring it up now?
Yeah, cuz they're very, they're very, they're very good succinct and brief, so let's see if we can do that.
So you have called a meeting to order?
I did call nine oh, seven oh one, correct.
Okay.
Now seven oh two.
All right. So let me, let me pull this up.
Yeah, it's pretty.
Second.
It's pretty tight.
Yeah, let me just pull this up just a second. Okay, then we can all look at it. Sorry. Give me a second. Give me a second. Can you all see that?
Uh, no.
I can't see anything yet.
I can't see it.
Can you see it, Jeff?
Not yet. You're, you're, you're doing share screen, right?
Yeah, right. Uh, why can't you see it, Chuck?
I, I just see all of you. Um, I see Michael there and I see everybody else.
Well, does everybody else see the, the screen share?
Oh, I don't think anybody sees it.
So does he have permission from someone to, or, or is he the, you, you, you need permission to screen share?
You know, Jeff, I'm gonna send you this right now. I just got it and you'll see it. Hopefully isn't a tat, yeah, it'll be, is a word attachment, so you, you should have.
I don't know, but it's more important than that, Chuck. Uh, so you're saying that if I click screen share, which I just did, you can see that? Everybody can see that?
Nope.
No.
Jeff, I see the minutes, so Jeff, you have them.
Um, I, I just got an email from you at seven oh four.
Yep.
Oh, uh, there we go. All right.
Touching to it and it's, and they're very succinct.
How, how about I just read them, okay? To myself while you guys talk about other things?
Okay.
Or not?
No, that's all right. Well, I don't know what just happened, but um, I, I guess someone, I guess we're gonna screen share now. I don't know what I get, is that your, uh, Herb, is that your, um, screen on the, uh?
Yeah, just a second.
Okay. And I also gave, Jeff has a hard, uh, an email copy too, so. Okay, there they are.
Okay, thank you. I'll scroll down, Jeff.
I'm, I'm, I'm doing my own copy on my own screen.
Okay.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm just getting through it.
Everybody else can read them.
Okay, I have only only one issue.
Probably the same one I have, but go ahead, Jeff.
So, um, th- this is in the, um, this is in the, uh, McCallum, McCallum special permit application. It, it's like below item number three, it says, Lacy posed the question regarding space for live-in health aid is indicated in the application documents. And, and here is what's a little confusing, noting that this space needs to be within the confines of proposed structure in order to be considered part of this special permit application. Well, uh, what I, what I did was I, I cautioned them that, that this single family dwelling cannot support an accessory apartment because the lot is too small. So, um, I, I wanted to point that out. Um, it, it's not part of this special permit, you know, there, there's no live-in health aid as a part of this special permit. And I, I did note that that it, you know, there's nothing that you, nothing preventing a live-in health aid, it, it just needs to be, um, it needs to be within the single family dwelling, not in an accessory apartment. Um, so I.
So what, you can, you can edit this the way you want, yeah.
Okay. How about, uh, needs to be within the confines of the single family dwelling, period. How's that, Jeff? Um, and everything, you know, in order to be considered a part of the special permit, the application should be struck. That's what I think.
Um, I, 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 I think, I think that's fine.
Okay.
So get rid of proposed structure?
Yeah, it needs to be within the confines of the, put the word dwelling in instead.
So what do you want taken out?
Right there, everything there, right there, take all that out.
Okay, what do you want in instead?
The, we're dwelling.
Of the present or of the proposed?
Times of the proposed dwell. Period.
I'm operating from a funny spot here, sorry.
Okay. And then I had, I had one more, uh, that was a very minor thing.
Yeah.
Scroll those in the same discussion, uh, right here, right here, it's Damari and Gilmore, next, next one down, go down a little bit. Damari and Gilmore agreed with Lacy, blah, blah, blah. It was unanimously, I, I, I thought it was unanimously supported. I don't, I don't, did we vote?
No.
No, so I.
No, we didn't approve it, we.
Alright, so, so, uh, so say it was unanimously supported, not, not approved, okay?
All three members unanimously support, that's what I said.
Well, no, it says approved.
No, look at it, it says support.
Well, it underneath there, because unanimously approved. Yeah, we, we, we didn't take a vote.
Yeah, so just.
No, 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 you're talking, it's a different thing. Of course, we didn't take a vote, it says unanimously support the project. The next thing is about the special permit variance application fee. Nothing to do with.
Okay, yeah, corrected.
Yep.
You're correct. Thank you so much.
Alrighty.
Okay, I, I thought, I just thought, cuz it was indented that it was, sorry, apologize.
It's indented like that, it's indented like that, it's indented like that.
Miraculpe, miraculpe.
Yeah. English one oh one.
I accept my responsibility cuz I, I just shouldn't have written the rest of it. Okay, I, I'd like to have a motion to approve these minutes as amended.
They'll move.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, let, let's, let's vote. What say you, Herb Gilmore?
Aye.
What say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
Let's say you, Chuck Damari?
Aye.
Okay, let's go to the next item on the agenda, which is item number four.
So Chuck, I will send these to you or do you have them now and you can take care of it from here?
Yeah, why, why don't you send them to me again, because I don't, I wasn't, yeah, send them to me again and then I will, when I go to the town hall to sign the special permit or whatever I have to sign there, hopefully tomorrow or Friday, I will present these minutes to, in fact, I'll email them as well, but I'll, I'll present them hard copy or email copy to the town clerk, okay?
Alrighty.
Yeah. All right, um, the next one, item four is the continued site plan review and vote on the Michael A. Vinsky application for a six point one five kilowatt ground mounted residential solar array at three ninety-one West Pelham Road pursuant to the zoning section, by law section nine point one dash one B, and this is case number twenty-two dash zero zero two. I think Jeff, you were going to give us a draft, um, decision, is that right?
Yeah, and if, um, if, if Herb can take down whatever's up there, I'll share.
Can you see that?
Oh, okay.
All right.
Herb, is, that, that's the thing I sent out today.
Yeah.
Yeah, is, is there any way you can make it larger? I can't even read it.
Can't read? Okay.
Um, just like enlarge or something?
I know, helps you, makes it smaller.
Um, Jeff, where did you send it? You, you sent it to my AOL or my private practice?
I sent it to whatever, uh, yeah, um, one of your addresses that I always use.
All right, I, I, I'll, I'll check it out and, um.
It, it, it's very simple. I, I can go through it, but I, I think I would rather share it myself so I could see it in, in order to read it.
Okay, well, uh, Jeff, you can take over if you wanna try to enlarge it. I think you can probably do that yourself too.
Yeah, I, um, that's the problem with share screen, everything is too small.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm, all I can tell you is that, uh, I'm as large as I can get right now. I'll try to do what I can to make it larger. Here we go, uh, I'll go to, uh, that's not gonna help.
It, it, oh, oh, how, how about down at the bottom there where it says, um, you're, you're right down bottom right?
Bottom right. I got it. Yeah, 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 okay.
You can go there.
Oh, there we go. What do you need, Jeff?
Just, um.
Sorry.
Oh, some happy medium there.
How's that look?
Yeah, it looks pretty good. I can read that.
Okay.
All right, so, so oh, it's a little big, but anyway.
Well, what do you want there, Jeff? I'm trying to do what you want.
Stop, stop doing it. It's good.
Okay, good.
All right, so, um, anyway, um, th- this is just a, 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 a dirt sample straightforward site plan on a, on a, um, ground mounted residential solar, that, uh, you know, ju- just perfectly complies with everything we want. So, um, it just lists a bunch of dates, the meeting dates, the hearing dates, the, the book and page, the town parcel number, the request, six point one five kilowatt ground matter residential solar array. Um, it lists off the plans that we have. Mike, um, I, I, I had a question, the, um, oh, I can't edit crap.
Just tell me what to do.
Okay, um, Mike, who, who authored these plans?
Uh, that's, uh, Go Green Solar in Anaheim, California.
Okay, so, um.
Where does that go, Jeff? Semi column?
Right after, um, on the site plan, in, in the plot plan, right after two point zero comma, write the name of, of the company that, that did it.
Under plot plan?
Just before May twelve.
Just before May twelve, after the comma?
After the comma with a space and then.
All right.
And then.
You want a parentheses?
Nope, just, just Go Green, what is it, Mike? Go Green Solar?
Go Green Solar, that's correct.
Go capital green?
Correct.
Another word solar? Oh. Down to where they're from?
Anaheim, California.
How's that?
Comma, and then just hit it with a comma and a space.
Uh, where do you wanna come in a space?
Right after, right after the A.
Right after the A.
Yeah, so every, e- everything there is separated by, yeah, comma, right there.
Whatever you need, it's fine.
Now, Mike, is, is the Go Green one word or two?
Uh, it's one.
All right, and is the G capitalized?
Yes.
Okay, so Herb, can you take that, copy it and, and put that right up above, uh, the same way, u- under the site plan? Oh. You just want that, oh.
I know, Jeff. I'm doing my best. You're asking a seventy-six-year-old brain to run this meeting, take notes and vote.
Isn't that a pain? Look at it, it's been a.
It may or may not work, you know, I mean, uh.
You might have to actually type it out again.
I think I may have to type it out there.
You start with.
It doesn't, doesn't allow me to do it.
Even, okay.
Is that it?
Yep, okay, so.
Right.
So now the plans are, are, are better represented here.
Okay.
Mike, on the plans, it says owner installs. Is, is, are you gonna install all this stuff yourself?
That's correct.
You're gonna install it, physically install it, put it in.
Correct.
Okay. Um, all right, well, let's keep going down. So the findings, now I, I just copied these findings from the last one that we approved, which was very similar.
Hmm.
Um, so these are the same findings. We've already, we've already approved these before, for another one that was very approvable.
Excellent.
Like this one. And then the votes, um, I, I suggest the votes are, um, I, I, I.
Hmm, okay.
Then we keep, let's go down a little bit. And the conditions were similar to the other one as well. Let me see, well, what Mike thinks about these conditions. Prior discussion of the installation plans, we should very fire chief. Installation plans must be submitted to the wiring inspector slash officials for review and approval prior to installation. That would be Mo Gregoire. Installation must be done according to the plans submitted to the zoning board of appeals, that's standard. And installation must be in accordance with manufacturer's destruction, national fire protection standards. This, this is pretty much exactly what we had for the last one of these, we did. Mike, you, you got any issues with those conditions?
Yeah, I think, um, um, it's, um, discussion of the installation plans with the Schutzhberg Fire Chief, I think is a little overkill. Um, the, the plans are designed, um, with all the, um, um, say electrical and fire, um, um, possibilities incorporated already, so, um, I mean, the fact that the, um, uh, the AC disconnect for the solar panels are right next to the electric meter, that's, that's all standard, um, for anybody who's installing one of these, and that's, that's primarily what the fire department would want to know is where is the shut off uh, for the solar panels. So, um, um, you know, I, I, um, you know, having a conversation with the, with the fire chief is, is gonna be, uh, yeah, that's, that, uh, that's, that's all in accordance with, um, standard operating procedure for installation and I wouldn't expect that there, there'd be any further discussion or anything, so, um, it just seems to be, um, you know, an unnecessary step in, in the whole process. Um, so that would be my comment about that anyway.
Jeff, um, the, the, in the last case, there was something about the size of the, um, wattage that the fire chief himself had some concerns and wrote us a very detailed, lengthily letter about his concerns. And, and I think that's why we put that, uh, condition in that last one, and I, I don't think we received anything. I don't think this is the same as the last one in the sense of the concern, that particular concern that the fire chief had, so I, I would agree with. That the fire chief had, so I, I, I would agree with, uh, the applicant here and just strike that. Make, make the, strike it and make installation, uh, the second number two, make that number one, and that's, that, that's what I.
Oh, yeah, be careful, Herb, um, so.
I'll be careful, Jeff.
Okay, I, I just saw you. Highlighting the whole thing, so.
But it doesn't work very well, so I'll do it the way I can.
Okay, so I, I think the last one may have had batteries too.
Yeah, I did, huge one.
I mean, I mean, batteries are, are more concerned to the fire chief than just a.
Yeah, I think, I think.
Solar panels.
Yeah, I think that these three conditions meet all of our needs.
Okay, so the rest of this stuff is all boilerplate, what's in every one of them, so, um, all, we've reviewed all the substance.
I, I, I have a, a quick question on that then, so, um, number two now, um. Uh, I mean, number one, the plans must be submitted to the wiring inspector for review and approval. I, I'm not sure how, um, how you go about, how you go about doing that. I, I know I need a building permit for this, and, you know, I understand the application process with Jim Hawkins for a building permit. But, um, there's nothing in particular that I've said, seen, or, um. Uh, or, uh, an application anywhere, um. That, um, that, that would go directly to, um, Maurice and everything, so. I'm, I'm not sure, what would you expect me to be doing as far as, um, complying with number one then?
Contacting Hawkins. And or Mo Gregoire and, um. Finding out what's required and. Meeting whatever those requirements are. Because, because this is gonna involve wiring.
Right.
Outside and inside, outside and inside, so Mo is probably gonna be, um, needing to look at this.
Okay, alright, I've, I've talked with him already and everything, so, um, I can, um, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll call him and explain. What, what this requirement is and, and see how he wants me to, um, uh, to meet this requirement then.
You might just wanna look at the plans and say, no problem, I approve. That's probably sufficient.
Okay.
Yeah, and, you know, all, all, all you have to do is, is, is submit it, and if they go and say, well, you know. We don't have to do anything further, there's no permit, then that's it, you've submitted it, that's, that's the action item submitting.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I'd like to entertain a motion to, uh, to, to, to approve this. Any motions, uh, Herb, how about you, Herb?
Do I move to approve it?
Okay, uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Jeff Lacy seconds, okay, we're gonna, I'm gonna, uh, call a vote, what say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
What say you, Herb Gilmore?
Aye.
What say you, Chuck Damari? Aye, the ayes have it, it's unanimously approved, and hopefully, um. If, uh, Jeff, if you could just send me an email copy of this. You know, I, I prefer my private practice, uh, address, which is, uh, not my AOL, but. You know, that's fine, if, you know, I'll try to find it on AOL.
Okay, Herb, Herb has this now, because it's been worked over a little.
Send it to me then, okay, you, you all always send it to me to my private practice, okay, fantastic, alright, let's go to item number five. Now, this is the continued public hearing and vote on the application of Donna and Andrew McCollum. For property located at fourteen Lake Drive for a special permit for the reconstruction of their house. On the existing foundation footprint, but increasing the current height. Of approximately seventeen feet to no, no more than twenty-eight feet, in parentheses, twenty-six feet from the roadside grade. The new house will sit well within the conforming setbacks to the lake. But enlarged by three feet, two inches on that side, and preserve the footprint side setbacks shifting the non-conformity. From the south side line into conformity resulting in balanced conformity. This is case number twenty-two zero zero one. So Jeff, if you, we can go through the same process and, and, uh.
And you all see this, is that big enough, Jeff?
It is, um, Herb, is there any way you can let me do the share screen? I, I'm sort of more comfortable if I'm doing it.
Not that I, really, why is that?
Well, if, if you're the meeting host, you have the ability to, to let you, to let me do that.
Yeah, uh, you tell me how to do that, and I'll do it.
Well, you know, well. Okay, well, it looks like you're doing it. No, I, I, I don't know how to, I've never been a meeting host, so I, I don't know how to, um, tell you how to do that, so, let's just, let's just do it, so.
I mean, I have been ad hoc, but I really can't tell you where I clicked to share this.
Yeah.
Maybe, uh, Andrew, Andrew seems to know, do you know where I would click, Andrew, to give Jeff the ability to do this?
I think I'm, well, I, um, my wife may be able to say better. Yeah, so, um, let's see here, you have to, um. You have to go into your settings on your Zoom account in order to enable sharing by, uh, by other participants.
So Jeff, uh, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Forget about it, forget about it, just enlarge it a little bit.
Tell me what to do.
Enlarge it a little bit.
Enlarge it a little, okay.
You know, like the last time, just, just click that.
That I can do.
Okay, there we go.
How's that?
Yeah, that's pretty good, and center it a little bit.
Oh, now you're asking a lot, Jeff.
You gotta grab the bar down, yeah, there you go, alright, nevermind.
Is that big enough?
Yeah, yeah, alright.
Okay.
Alright, so. So, so he, here's a decision that reflects what I think we, um, what, what our feelings were last time, it's a decision to approve. And, um, it just goes through the normal, um, information up in the top, uh, similar to the other form for the last permit. Um, and then if we move down, there's a bunch of dates, the hearing dates, which was, uh, June ninth. Uh, the request demolition and replacement of existing dwelling. And then, uh, the plans, I listed off all the plans that were submitted by Berkshire Design Group and Coleman and Hartman Architects. So there were plans, plot plans and building plans, those are all listed, they're in the file, keep heading down, and then the findings. Um, so these findings sort of, um, the, the first three, um, I took off the last one we did. Which was the first one that we did after the controversial one, and. It's where I paid a lot more attention to sort of framing what we were doing in these permits. So, um, the first three are almost verbatim what we did on the last one of these we approved. So it, um, it, it establishes that this is a non-conforming, uh, structure because it fails to meet. Existing lot size, frontage, front setback and side setback requirement, so that's what we're dealing with. Um, number two.
May I take the A, may I take the A out? Cause that is grammatically telling me it's not correct.
And A size? Well.
You said A.
Yeah, one, one.
One, one.
O, O N E.
Oh, then you have to take a, get rid of S.
Oh, yeah, I guess.
Okay, there we go.
Good.
So, project proposed reconstruction extension structural change, blah, blah, blah. Uh, where an increase in height is proposed, so that's what kicks it in for a special permit. Um, down to number three. And this just recites, um. Um, what our bylaw, how our bylaw tells us we have to proceed with this thing, can you take it down some more so I can read the rest of it? Yeah, so you can read this, um. An increase in height is proposed constituent, constitutes an increase in the non-conforming nature of the structure and aspects required special permit finding under. Six point one dash three C of this bylaw, the board also independently so determines because the added height will raise up the structure which. Does not now meet a currently required side setback, this will increase the structure's volume within the setbacks. On one side and front, thus increasing the non-conforming nature of the structure. So, this just reiterates how our bylaw positions this, th- this, um, this structure and this proposal. Four is where we get into the specific findings about this project. And, and, um, and four is really the key. ZBA finds a proposed demolition and rebuild project is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conforming structure. For the following reasons, and these are the reasons that we, I listed some of them off last time. Centering the dwelling upon the lot will reduce the most severe side setback non-conformity to the south while still providing substantial distance. From the existing dwelling to the north. There are no dwellings directly across Lake Drive from the subject dwelling. Numerous trees along the northerly property boundary will be retained as a buffer. Proposed dwelling is well-designed, street-friendly and should enhance the neighborhood. The wastewater from the proposed dwelling will be directed to a tight tank thereby reducing the amount of excavation and disturbance to the lot. And any lake water quality impacts from septic system. Numerous letters of support for the project have been received and entered into the record, there was no negative testimony received. So, um, those were the findings as I saw them, um. Could add to them if anyone else has a finding, they wanna propose.
Uh, uh, did we say, uh, anything about building this according to the plans submitted? Did we say anything?
Well, that's down in the conditions, I believe.
Okay, alright, perfect, I'm sorry. Let's go through the conditions.
Yeah, so, so, uh, again, the votes would be I, I, I. And conditions, well, and construction premises shall be a single-family residence as proposed in the plans submitted with the application. Final height of the subject dwelling shall be no greater than twenty-eight feet, this is, this comes from that other permit as well. Measured in accordance with the definition of building height in the town Schutzbury zoning by law as follows. And it recites what that is. Building inspector shall assure that the grades are in accordance with the elevation plans and the final construction plans submitted with the building permit application.
Okay, uh.
And the rest of this stuff is, um, is not, um, is, um, administrative stuff that goes in all of them.
Okay, I'd like to. We've, we've had some good discussions last time, I would like to entertain. Uh, a motion, can someone so move to approve this, uh, special permit?
Uh, I move to support.
Okay, uh, can we have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm gonna call the vote, what say you, Herb Gilmore?
Aye.
Say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
What say you, Chuck Damari? Aye, the ayes have it, this is unanimously approved, if you can. Shoot that to me tomorrow morning, Herb, the both of them, and I'll, and I'll get these to the town clerk. Okay. Alright, let, let's, uh, let's move on, now, actually.
Excuse me for one minute?
Yeah.
Uh, we, we were trying to get your attention, we just wanna point out that you said that numerous trees will be left as they are, and you. We, as discussed last week, you know that some trees will be coming down, but the roots will be left in, and I wanna make sure that. That wording is fine with you.
I, I think it still is, but.
Yeah, I, I, I think some of the trees that are coming down are on, on your lot, and, and then it appears that, um. It appears that most of the trees that are staying are just over the line on the other lot.
Okay, great.
No, I think it says numerous too, that not every single one.
Right.
Yeah, and that should be fine, but we just wanted, absolutely.
Well, I mean, let's just look at that again about the trees, just to make sure. Keep going.
Yeah, it's, it's four something.
Okay. Numerous trees, I see it, uh, uh, will be retained as a buffer, so, it doesn't say every single tree.
Great.
Right, so I, I, I think that's fine. Okay, so Herb, if you can get, again, both of these to me. I, I like to move to education and guidance, I actually, is anybody here for that? I did, someone did call me and said that we're gonna show up. Uh, at around seven thirty, is anybody here that wants to be heard on this? Doesn't seem like they are, so let, let, let me just, uh, briefly talk about. The telephone conversation I had with someone, and I actually suggested they either come to this meeting or go to the planning board. But a gentleman called me and he and. A, a bunch of his associates, friends and colleagues are proposing to put together. A co-housing in Schutzbury. Uh, so I told them that he can come to this meeting and talk with all of us as to what his plans were. Whether it was a single-family house, a double-family house, or something beyond that, he's obviously not here, so I said if you decide not to come. I, I suggest you call the chair of the planning board and make an appointment. With the planning board as a whole for some education and guidance, he didn't leave me his number, so I can't give it to you, Jeff, uh, uh, otherwise I would have. I actually thought he'd show up tonight, so.
Was this the person that, let's see, um, the son of Bert Fernandez?
Did, I, I, I don't think I have his name, I don't think he even gave me his name, he might have, he might have said his name when he first. When he first picked up the phone, he might have said his first name.
Okay.
And, you know, it was several days ago, a week ago, you know, a little, well, less than a week ago, but.
Yeah, I don't see his name here in, uh, request to come into the meeting, so.
Yeah, so, so no one's waiting in the waiting room, right?
Yeah, I know, I can't see it.
So just, someone will probably contact the planning board, uh, or deacon, uh, and, and talk about co-housing, and I, I think it is. The jurisdiction, primarily the jurisdiction of the planning board to provide him some guidance and education.
Yeah, it would probably be something under Article Five in the bylaw.
Right.
The open space design, yeah, I, um, yeah, uh, somebody has been referred to me a couple times. Um, we haven't really connected yet, it might be that same person.
Okay. Alright, well, if they call, you know, you have my blessing between now and July first, then after that, it's your own blessing, so. Okay. And so, let, let's go back to, uh, item number seven. Old business. Uh, this is our final discussion and vote relative to the special permit. Variance application fees increasing to six hundred dollars, you know, from what was previously five hundred dollars. And I, I have in, in the minutes effective on July second, twenty twenty-two or later. And, you know, if, if we vote on this in, in the affirmative, and if we, and if we have a specific date there. I will also, uh, communicate that fact, uh, to, uh, the town clerk, wh- when I. Um, touch base with her and communicate with her, uh, relevant to the other two votes we've just had. In the affirmative, so is there any discussion on, on what the date should be? I, I, I think we are all generally in support of this. But, uh, you know, July second, maybe it should be August first or September first, I don't know. It's not on our website, in, in, in fact, the last application. When that application was made, the fee was actually five hundred, but apparently, our town clerk didn't know that. It, it's probably not on the website in that amount, so. So, you know, it has to be in the web, it should be in the website, or at least the town clerk has to understand that, cause. She's the one that accepts these applications and determines whether or not the application is, uh. Right or perfected, uh, so. If we can, I don't know if you're, how you all feel about July second, or should it be August first? September first, January first, I'm, you know, any, any thoughts about that?
Well, let's see, Chuck, you're gonna transmit stuff to the town clerk tomorrow, right?
Or the next day, soon, it depends on her schedule, but my intention is to do that tomorrow, uh, or Friday the latest, yes.
Why don't we, uh, why don't we vote to make it, um, um, effective, um, upon your. Communication of same to town clerk.
Okay, okay, excellent, so it's either gonna be tomorrow. Uh, which is the sixteenth or the next day, the seventeenth.
Okay.
Alright.
I'll, I'll, I'll move that we, um, that we increase the special permit variance fees from five hundred to six hundred dollars. Effective, um. Uh uh at at the time that the current chair conveys that to the town clerk.
Okay, uh is there a second?
A second.
Okay, uh I I I'm gonna call a vote. Uh what say you, Herb Gilmore?
I.
Say you, Jeff Lacy?
I.
Let's say you Chuck Damari, I, the eyes have it. Uh it's um. It's approved, and I will uh communicate within the next twenty-four or forty-eight hours to the town clerk of this fact. Um, okay, uh. Don't know if there's any new business. Is there any new business? Does item number eight on the agenda?
Well, um Chuck, I I would like to um. I I would hopefully like it if 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 you were available a little bit. Um. For for me to consult with just on on matters pertaining to how you conduct your business of 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 being the chair.
Okay, absolutely.
I I've been on these boards for a long time, but I have never served as chair nor wanted to. So I've, you know, there's just things I haven't done, so.
Well, I will give you uh up to one year to consult with me. How's that?
Okay.
And maybe after that.
Then you're, then your hourly rate kicks in.
Oh, no, 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 maybe just a beer.
Okay, I give you a beer anyway.
Okay, all right, you got it, Jeff. Just call anytime. It's not a problem. Um, all right. The next item. Uh nine is a final farewell to myself and to Herb Gilmore. Goodbye, Chuck. Goodbye, Herb. I think this is probably our last meeting, although I I do want to say one thing about that, um Herb. Because I wa- uh Carrie did communicate with me today. And she said, and I know you're probably doing it, that she would. Put together the minutes, but if you're doing it, great. And then, you know. Depending upon when you're done with the minutes. Um yeah, my suggestion is if you get done before July second, to give them to both Jeff and I. And and then the only other question I have, even though. Uh about approving the minutes is. Uh if this was uh an early item on a future agenda after July second. You know, and if you gave myself notice, I I guess you might need Herb's vote too. To approve the minutes, but I I I would have no objection, uh Jeff, if you discussed with me. Uh to the extent you have a meeting, your first meeting after July second, and you want a whole bunch of dates from me that I'm available. Uh just to show up at the beginning of the meeting. I don't, I guess I can't even vote after July, so I don't know. How does it work? So Herb and I don't have even. Unless we approve them before.
I I think I I think existing members.
Yeah.
Could. Could vote.
After July second, uh after.
I I I believe they could.
Okay.
I mean, I've I've voted, well, I I I, you know, sometimes you recuse yourself, but I I don't, I think you can vote, especially if the other members. Or past members concur that these are accurate minutes.
Yeah, right.
Well, with a little bit of evidence from 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 you that that you concur. Um then I I think new members can vote.
Okay, okay, all right, all right. So then he, so. So so perhaps that what we should do is Herb and I, Herb can, Herb, are you gonna take, you have the minutes, Herb?
Sure.
Okay, so Herb can puts the minutes to me. Herb and I can go back and forth, making sure we're good with it. And then uh I can communicate with you either at a meeting as a as a non-member or or just let you know. And you can convey that. Even though it's hearsay, it's it is admissible. In an administrative proceeding, you can say that you talked to me and I concur, or I'll I'm happy to show up for. Five minutes and say Herb and I. Herb drafted them. We 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 tossed it back and forth. We're both. Uh we both be um believe that these are accurate minutes, and I can, and then you can convey that to the rest, or I can convey it in person. If you want me there, okay?
What about, what about setting up one final meeting with that is the only thing on the agenda?
That's a possi- that's fine with me too.
But if we do that, we're gonna have minutes for that.
We gotta cut the cord somewhere, I guess.
Yeah, so why don't we just do it? I I mean, I think I think. You know, one thing that's different than an administrative proceeding that this is, than a court of law, is hearsay is admissible. So even if I talk to, say to Jeff. Where have I, double hearsay, have discussed this. And uh and we approve these minutes, and and you have our blessings. Uh to uh uh recommend to your new colleagues, whoever they may be. That these minutes should be approved, yeah, especially if you also agree with Jeff, you know, because you were here. So I think that's okay, rather than, because I think you're, I think you're right. And we have another meeting, we gotta approve those minutes too, so we're in the same position.
Yeah.
So I I assume the next meeting will probably. Happen after July second. Um, you know, Jeff, if anybody calls me between now. And um at the end of the day, July one. You know. Uh you know, I I if if there's a special permit application or. You know, it's probably very unlikely I'll be able to set up a meeting if they call me, you know, next week.
Yeah.
Like, if it's some kind of emergency, I can imagine I I would try to organize a meeting, but if they call me. Uh I'll 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 let them know I'm winding down, and they should call you.
Yeah.
On or after July second.
Yeah, yeah, I'm 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 gone all next weekend, vacation anyway.
Okay. And I'll, you and I will consult many times, I'm sure, Jeff, to uh. I I can tell you what is, you know, what, not only how to run a meeting, I thought, I think you know how to run a meeting, because you've watched. I don't know, ten years we've been together here, I think, at least. Um but the rest of it, how to deal with everything else, which is, you know.
So so one thing would be very helpful, Chuck, is you you probably have some uh some um. Some files, some Word files um that you use. Probably have a template for.
Oh.
Uh for the newspaper announcements and.
Yes, 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 but.
Uh other things like that.
Yes.
Um if 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 you could forward those things to me, you know, so I I can see what you're using.
Yeah, but I have done that already, because every time I send that letter. To everyone, to the clerk, to the Hampshire Gazette. Uh however I send it to, which is all the all of us, deacon, you know, all the co- the chairs of all the other land use boards. Uh I send, I deliberately have been sending them them in Word. So you can just cut and paste them. Now, I I would recommend, though. And I'm happy to send you anything you want, anytime you want, you just 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 let me know, and you'll get them. I get tons of them. But I would recommend we consider moving. Um from the Gazette to the. Uh to the Greenfield Recorder. I I. I don't know, my my. My announcements, my notices are getting smaller and smaller and smaller, but the bills are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You know.
Yeah.
So, uh you know, and and Becky Torres did say to me. Save a couple hundred bucks if you just go to the recorder, so I don't, you know, it's the same county. Greenfield is our county, county seat, so I don't.
Yep.
You know.
All right.
You know, so but.
Yeah, I'll 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 consider that.
Yeah, because the template. Yeah, it's a bit about the template is, you know, the, and I do it almost all, I just, I cut and paste it, and I print out. Making sure I have all the email addresses, and I have two email addresses of the Gazette. I think we should just find out who the advert, where the advertising department is. In the Greenfield Recorder, and then the rest. It's the same template, and I and I'll, and I'll send it to you. I've got.
Okay.
You know, but you have them too, if you.
Yeah.
Unless you delete them, because they're in Word form, okay?
Yeah.
Um and you know, obviously. You know, I try as best as I can with the special permit applications is to cut and paste, not necessarily cut and paste, but I have a. A hard copy of the special permit application in front of me, and then I. And I put together uh based on their application. Uh I put together, you know, what what the request is.
Yeah, yeah.
So all um also, Chuck, a a um. Um, you know, i- if you think of it, I I I don't have a full understanding of everything that Carrie does.
Well. Um. We, let's talk about that.
Okay.
Well.
We don't have to do it tonight. I actually need to skip to a board of health meeting, because.
Yeah, so let's. Um, let's call me on that, because, you know, Carrie, Carrie is not here tonight. She wasn't at the last meeting, so we'll talk about all that, okay?
Okay.
Um, and I know she's gonna review this, because she wants to write the minutes, but I'll tell her that Herb's writing the minutes.
Okay.
Um, so, all right, so farewell to me and and. And Herb, goodbye to each other. Uh and then number ten, congratulations to you, Jeff Lacy. For your recent election to be the ZBA Chair Clerk effective on July second. So the next item, eleven. Is uh schedule an ex-ZBA meeting. I'm, again, I'm, I I think that. Given we're in transition right now, given you're gonna be on vacation next week. I'll do the best I can between now and uh. The uh end of the day on July first. And if they call me after July first, I'll I'll give them your contact information.
Yeah, I I I think the next meeting will either be when there's some business that has come in, or. When there is at least one other member, because two out of three can be a quorum for just a discussion meeting. But when there's at least one other member, hopefully two other members, and it'll be sort of an organizational meeting that I'll. Um that I'll call, even if there's no business, but.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, and then uh. And and by the way, just in terms of right, um running a meeting, I just want to say one thing. Uh the most important thing, and just common sense, is let anybody who wants to be heard be heard. And then we'll talk, you know, offline about the the ordering of that and making sure they're heard fully.
Yeah.
That they're heard fully, that, you know, if the applicant. Speaks, and then three or four other, a buddy speak, or a member speak, that the applicant speak again. So just making sure everybody. Is said their piece.
Yeah, well, I subscribe to that. I mean, often when we have contentious planning board meetings, and there's a lot of talks. The last thing that Deacon says before he closes the meeting or closes a a subject area is. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say?
Exactly.
If he gets no response, then he moves on.
Perfect, yeah. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I have, I don't know what I have. Uh. I don't, I can't see, I can see this clock over, wait a minute.
I've got seven fifty-five.
Eleven fifty-five.
I'll I'll move to adjourn with fond farewells.
Okay, uh you have a second, uh Herb?
I second that.
Okay, we'll call a vote. What say you, Herb Gilmore?
I.
Would say you, Jeff Lacy?
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye. It is now seven fifty-six. The meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-six. Jeff, my best wishes for you and good luck. And I and I and I I know you have the absolute knowledge. And 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 expertise, and I and I'm sure you'll be outstanding chair. May you serve as long as I have sixteen years.
So may I not. I'm 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 looking for another chair right now.
Okay.
All right, guys, well.
Thank you, guys.
Take care.
Thanks for everything.
Farewell, everybody.
Thank you.
Farewell.